Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. My name is Douglas Flournoy, I'm the Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Boyer could not be here tonight, so she asked me to take her place. And just so the public understands, I am running the meeting, but I'm still a member of the council, so I retain my full privileges, meaning I can participate in deliberations and I can vote. So I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ham?
Here.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 council meeting, approval of the July 5th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $186,016.81, resolution authorizing additional physical year 25 tobacco permit holders, resolution of employment in the street department, resolution of employment in the park and recreation department, approval of liquor licenses for the Walton Club, approval of note paying agent fee in the amount of $500, approval of ACH payment to the Department of Revenue in the amount of $12,331.64, approval of total claims in the amount of $528,620.54, and there are no claims in excess of $75,000.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Second by Estee. Is there any discussion?
I did review the claims and everything seemed in order.
Thank you. Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor, motion carries unanimously. All right, public forums and appearances. Our first appearance will be Dustin Beenstra, Greenwood, Bell, Lynn and Company, PC, for the audit for the fiscal year 23.
My name is Dustin Beenstra of the Flournoy, Bell, Klein and Company. I was a part of the audit engagement team for the audit of the City of Fairfield's June 30, 2023 financial statement audit, and I'm here tonight to briefly go over the results for our audit and briefly go over the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2023. If you turn to page two on the packet, including the financial statements that is in front of you, this is the independent auditor's report. This is the standard report for an unmodified opinion on the city's cash basis financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2023. The cash basis financial statements mean that these financial statements do not include accruals for accounts receivable, accounts payable and other accruals. An unmodified opinion means that our opinion on the city's financial statements, that they are fairly presented in all material respects. We came up with, we determined this opinion by our audit team performing audit procedures on the city's financial information in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards in order to obtain sufficient and appropriate audit evidence. On page three of this audit report, the next page, details the manager's responsibilities and our responsibilities during this audit. One thing to note on these responsibilities is that even though we assisted in preparing these financial statements, these financial statements are still the responsibility of management of the city and our responsibility is to provide an opinion on these financial statements. If you turn to page five of the packet, it is the first of the three required financial statements for the city. This is the cash basis statement of activities and net position. This financial statement reports all funds of the city and shows how much of the city's disbursements are paid with specific program receipts and how much with general receipts, such as property taxes, other city taxes, et cetera. This statement is broken down by government activities and business type activities. Governmental activities are broken down by function, such as public safety, public works, cultural recreation and general government. Business type activities are broken down by types, such as water utilities, sewer utilities, airport and solid waste utilities of the city. On this statement, the disbursements are reduced by receipts for these specific services, such as charges for services from water and sewer receipts and other charges for services, operating grants, contributions and restricted interest. The main operating grant received in that column on page five is the $2.2 million in the public works row. This includes receipts from the road use tax collections during the year and grants from the Iowa DOT for road and bridge repairs within the city. The last section for program receipts are capital grants, contributions and restricted interest. The main capital grant on this column is the $914,000 recorded in the sewer fund, which was the USDA grant received by the city for funding of step one of the wastewater treatment plant projects. The next section of this statement details the net receipts or disbursements over, disbursements over receipts and changes in cash basis and position. This details how much of the program receipts are above the program disbursements. For governmental activities, program disbursements or disbursements were over and above program receipts by $6.3 million. In the business type activities, disbursements were above program receipts by $2.4 million and in total, the disbursements were above program receipts of the entire city of, by $8.7 million. Disbursements for governmental activities are offset by these program activities and also, program receipts and also general receipts, which is on the next page of this statement. These general receipts include property taxes levied for general purposes and debt service. That is the $4.7 million, $4.7 million amount and the $1.1 million amount in the governmental activities column on the top. Also, other general receipts include tax increment financing collections of $358,000, local ops and sales tax collections of $1.2 million and American Rescue Act planned grant proceeds of $779,000. On the business type activities column, there was $1.5 million recorded as revenue note proceeds. These proceeds were received from the USDA sewer revenue loan related to funding of the step two project for the wastewater treatment plant. Overall, during the year, the change in cash basis and position for governmental activities increased by $2.4 million. Business type activities decreased by $787,000 and in total, the cash basis position changed by, for the city changed by $1.6 million, leaving a total cash basis and position of the city at $23 million at the end of the year. The decrease in the business type activities cash position during the year is mostly due to timing of step three wastewater plant treatment project funding. The city issued $8,999,000 of interim financing sewer revenue notes during December of 23, so that would, those proceeds would bring the position, would have brought the cash basis position to a positive increase during the year if those were issued during fiscal year 23. One other thing to note is note three of the financial statements, the city has approximately $46 million of debt outstanding at June 30, 2023, and $41 million of this $46 million is related to USDA loans for the financing of the sewer projects. This debt is required to be paid with sewer customer net receipts and not through taxation, and we will talk about a little later on as well. If you turn the next page with me to page seven, this is the second of the three required financial statements of the city. This is the statement of cash receipts, disbursements and changes in cash balances for governmental funds. This financial statement reports all activity of the city's governmental funds, showing six major funds separately. These funds are the general fund, road use tax fund, local ops and sales tax fund, South Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, the debt service fund and the capital projects fund. The remaining funds of the city for governmental funds are aggregated in the non-major column on this financial statement. Governmental funds account for services provided, paid primarily with tax receipts, as we discussed before, in the general receipts for the first financial statement. And the general fund during the year, the general fund received $5.3 million of receipts, $4.9 million of disbursements and had a net change in cash balances of $649,000 during the year, leaving a cash balance of the general fund of $5 million. Some other things to note on this financial statement is that the road use tax had internal governmental receipts of $2.2 million. That's the same receipts as discussed before of road use tax collections and Iowa DOT grants received during the year. Local ops and sales tax reported receipts of $1.2 million during the year. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund recorded $779,000 of receipts during the year, and there were no disbursements during the year. According to resolution by the city, these funds are to be used for funding of the construction of the new fire station for the city, which will be done in future fiscal years. Overall, governmental funds for the city, the city received $2.9 million of receipts, spent $10.5 million of disbursements, resulting in a change in cash balance of $2.4 million positive, and cash balance at the end of the year for governmental funds of $12.7 million. The city had $5.4 million of general obligation debt at the end of the year, June 30, 2023, which is required to be paid out of the debt service fund. So the $12.7 million of cash at the end of the year appears to be good overall balances of governmental funds at the end of the year. The next, next financial statement is on page nine. This is the third and final required financial statement for the, for the city. This is the statement of cash receipts, disbursements and changes in cash balances for proprietary funds. This financial statement reports the activity of the city's enterprise funds during the year. Enterprise funds account for services paid by users of these services. The major funds for the enterprise funds were the water and sewer fund. The sewer, the water fund received $1.3.1 million of receipts during the year and the sewer fund received $3.4 million of receipts during the year. Overall, there were, for the sewer fund, there was $1.9 million of operating receipts over operating disbursements during the year, and this excess of receipts over disbursements is used to help pay for capital projects for the sewer fund and for debt service payments for the USDA loans taken out for those projects. Overall, during the year, all enterprise funds for the city received $7.3 million of operating receipts, dispersed $4.5 million of operating disbursements during the year, had $4.3 million of capital projects disbursements during the year related to sewer, sewer capital projects and water capital projects mostly, and debt service payments for water and sewer revenue debt of $1.8 million. Overall, as discussed before, there is a decrease in cash balance for the enterprise funds of $787,000, leaving a cash balance at the end of the year of $10.2 million. And this decrease in cash balances was mostly due to the timing of funding for the step three wastewater funding. Following this financial statement is the footnotes for the financial statements, which describe the activity of the city in more depth. There were no new major notes during the year compared to last year, and so we will skip over those and go to page 47. Page 47 is schedule four, this is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Since the city expended over $750,000 of federal awards during the fiscal year, the city was required to have a single audit, which involves more testing of internal controls and compliance for federal grants expended during the year. This schedule is a required part of the single audit and the schedule summarizes federal awards expended by the city during the fiscal year. A couple of items to note on this schedule is the top number, the city expended $2.4 million of USDA funds received in grants and loans for the sanitary sewer wastewater treatment projects, and the next item below that of $567,000, the city received CDBG awards during the year and expended that $567,000 of those awards, mostly to the Jefferson County Kids, Inc., organization for their, for the improvements for its daycare facility. Overall, the city expended $3.091 million of federal awards during fiscal year 2023. Turn with me to the next page, on page 48. This is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. This report is required for all audits conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. This report is provided to report our consideration of the city's internal control and compliance on certain provisions of laws, regulations and contracts, but not to provide an opinion like our independent auditor's report on the city's internal control or compliance. We did note some, we did note certain findings of internal control deficiencies and compliance requirements that are in the following schedule of findings and question costs, which we will discuss in a little bit. If you turn the page to page 50, this is our final auditor's report. This is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major federal program, non internal control or compliance required by the uniform guidance. Since the city was required to have a single audit, this report was required to provide our opinion on, on the city's major federal, major federal program. This, this report expresses our opinion on the city's major federal program, its compliance with requirements under the, under the United States Office of Management and Budget. No opinion was expressed on the city's, on the city's internal control related to the major program, but no issues were noted during our testing of internal controls of the city's federal major program. In our opinion, we noted that the city fairly complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements for the city's major program that could have a direct and material effect on the major program during fiscal year 23. If you would turn to me, with me to page 53, this is the beginning of the schedule of findings and question costs. This is part one, that shows a summary of our, of our results of the audit. Couple of things to note on this one as well. Letter C is that we did not disclose any non-compliance during our, during our audits, which is material to the financial statements. We did note some non-compliance that, which we determined to be immaterial to the financial statements, which we will, we'll discuss soon. Letter D, the audit did not disclose any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over the major program during our single audit testing. And G, the major federal program for the city was the USDA grant and loans received by the city. This is under assistance listing number 10.760, Water and Waste Disposal Systems for Rural Communities. That was the $2.4 million on the top of this scheduled federal awards discussed earlier.
May I ask a question on this page?
Yes.
I was just curious about I, the City of Fairfield did not qualify as a low risk.
Yeah, so that's more of, the single audit requires us to determine if the, if the city is a low risk or non-low risk. The city is only a non-low risk because it's on the cash basis of accounting. To be on the, to be qualified as a low risk, it would need to be on the accrual basis of accounting, which would require recording capital assets, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and that would be the only way for the city to not be a low risk. All of this does is determine how much we need to, of the federal awards that we need to test.
Okay.
Since it's a lower risk, non-low risk audit, we had to test 40% of the federal awards. If it was a low risk, we'd only need to test 20% of the, of the federal awards. That's the only main difference of this low risk and non-low risk.
Okay, thanks.
On page 54, this is part two, this is our findings related to financial reporting during our overall audit of financial statements. And this is the internal control, internal control deficiencies that we noted during our testing. The first one is segregation of duties. Due to the size of the city, internal control cannot be adequately segregated between employees and the members of the city. This is, this is typical for cities of Fairfield size. This is more of an informative disclosure to remind the city council of its importance and its role, in its role of this, in the system of internal controls for the city. During our testing, we did note that the city did have adequate controls for its size, but this comment is more, more of an informed disclosure to keep you guys aware of certain problems that could happen due to the size of the city. On page 55 is the financial reporting comment. We noted a couple of items during our testing. One was that the, the city has cash held by its employee health plan that was not included in the city's records, and we also noted that there was interest received on one CD that was not properly recorded in the financial records. Last year, we had a comment that all interest on CDs were not recorded, but in fiscal year 23, they were recorded except for one, one was missed. And our recommendation for this would be just to make sure that there are policies in place to record the, the city's cash in the city's health plan and the, and all interest recorded on, all interest received on CDs in the city's financial records.
Quick question about that.
Yes.
Are CDs one year or are they multi-year?
Most of them are 12. We did have some 18 month.
So do they have to record it before it's awarded to the city?
No.
As a credit or?
At certain times during the year, I'm not sure, I guess it's probably, it's probably different for each CD, they do, I guess, deposit the interest and add it to the CD balance, and whenever that's done, it needs to be recorded as interest received by the city. And that was done during the year, there was this one CD that was missed during our testing, which will, which will, which will be recorded, which was recorded on these financial statements as a, as an existing internal entry. So it's recorded on these financial statements. Page 56, this is part three, this is our findings and question costs related to the major federal program, and we had no issues related to internal control or non-compliance for the federal awards. Part four is compliance requirements that we tested during our audit of the overall financial statements. There are 15 comments in this section, there are eight, there are seven findings that we found, found of non-compliance and eight other informative disclosures. I will quickly go over the seven findings of non-compliance that we noted. 2023A, the certified budget, we noted that the general government and the capital projects functions were over budget during the fiscal year for its fiscal year 23 budget, and our recommendation is just to keep track of the disbursements and amend the budget when necessary to make sure actual disbursements do not go over budgeted disbursements during the year. 2023H, deposits and investments. The city's, while testing the city's depository resolution, we noted that there were some deposits at some financial institutions that were not included on the depository resolution. These were related to the library, bank accounts, and a recommendation is that the city adopt any resolution to include all city, city deposits at all financial institutions, including the library accounts. I think this was, has been being worked on by the city clerk, trying to get all the library accounts into the city's financial records. 2023J, the annual urban renewal report. While testing the annual urban renewal report, we did note that the levy authority summary did not, the beginning and ending cash balances did not agree to the special revenue tax increment financing fund on these financial statements. The, the activity during the year did tie, but the beginning and ending cash balances did not tie, and our recommendation then would just ensure that amounts reported on the annual urban renewal report do agree to these financial statements. On page 58, this is 2023L, separately maintained records. The city had several bank accounts, the Indian Creek Escrow, World Development, Library Memorial, Library Capital Improvements, Fairfield Public Library House, Library Book Sale and Voltiere Center live on the square and the library endowment accounts. Those were not included in the city's financial records. They were included on the monthly reports given to the city council, but they were not on the financial records. That required us to make, testing internal entries to include them on these financial statements. Again, we've been talking to the city clerk, and he's been working on getting those implemented into the, integrated into the city's financial records. On page 59, this is 2023M, economic development. This comment is similar to last year, where we note that the city paid $26,000 to the Fairfield Economic Development Association. These, this does not necessarily mean that these disbursements were inappropriate, it's more of a disclosure to make sure that the city council documents this public purpose for these disbursements, and I think we noted that in fiscal year 24, so next year's audit that this, these disbursements were separately approved and discussed by the city council, and this comment will probably not continue next year, but this is more, we're calling for 23 because there was no separate discussion in fiscal year 23 for these, for these disbursements. In 2023N, financial condition, we did note one fund in the city's financial records. The Highway 34 Taxicamment Financing Fund had a $17,000 deficit balance during the year. The city is required to have, all their funds have a positive balance during the year. Our recommendation would just be to investigate alternatives, whether transferring money to the fund to make it be a positive balance or other ways to make it a positive balance. The final comment is on page 60, 2023O, annual financial report. While testing the AFR for the city, fiscal year 23, we did note that some, that the activity did not agree to the financial statements on, on these financial statements that were audited. These are mostly due to the separately maintained records noted on 2023L, where some activity was recorded differently than what is recorded on here, on the, on the financial statements. And our recommendation would be just to establish procedures to ensure that the AFR balances are probably supported and agreed to the city records. And that is our final comment. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have one question.
Yes.
On 2023A certified budget?
Yes.
Where we overspent in some budgeted areas, are you suggesting that we amend the budget before we approve the expense that would put us into a deficit?
Yes, yeah, you, you, the city is required to amend the budget to, to increase disbursements before you go over the, before you go over the budgeted amount, so.
We normally do one budget amendment a year and collect them all together so that we don't have multiple?
Yeah.
Adjustments.
Yeah, so as long as you guys are just keeping track of whether, if like you guys are getting close to being over budget in a, in a function, maybe have another one, even though you only do one, but yeah, they're required to be below the budgeted amounts.
Just being clear on that.
Yep, yep.
Counsel, are there any other questions? Thank you very much for your thorough explanation. So we need a motion to approve this, accept, accept the audit, I guess.
Yes, please.
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2023 audit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Estee, a second by Tohill, to accept the June 30, 2023 financial statement audit. Is there any discussion? All in favor, roll call them.
Sure. Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kennes?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next we have Faith Reeves, Sustainability Coordinator, speak to us about the RAC and the GIA.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you this evening, counsel, and all, oh, great, wonderful. I'm short, pardon me. Good evening, counsel. Thank you for allowing me to come to speak to you today, and I want to give you a little deeper dive into the Resilient Action Committee, what we're doing and how the Green Iowa AmeriCorps members are assisting, assisting us in our process. So you can see on the screen here, our mission statement. The mission of the Resilient Action Committee is to develop a community resilience plan by collecting information, conducting research, prioritizing the community's efforts to address current and anticipated challenges. The formation of the RAC, which all of you, I do believe, may be aware of, the resilient deeper dive into the Resilient Action Committee, what we're doing, and how the Green Iowa AmeriCorps members are assisting, assisting us in our process. So you can see on the screen here, our mission statement. The mission of the Resilient Action Committee is to develop a community resilience plan by collecting information, conducting research, prioritizing the community's efforts to address current and anticipated challenges. The formation of the RAC, which all of you, I do believe, may be aware of, the Resilient Action Initiative, the Resilient Action Committee, was originally dreamed up in twenty-twenty-two. That initially came out of work from the Sierra Club, from Ann Walton Chair and Mark Dwyer co-chair, worked together to do a deep review of the Fairfield Forever Plan and the Go Green Plan that has expired. And so they were noticing there were initiatives, objectives, goals, that were wonderful, but may need some implementation, or may need some support to continue the process of development. They realized that a sustainable coordinator, sustainability coordinator would be handy to have in order to help with that implementation process. Along with that review, they realized there were some aspects of resiliency that weren't necessarily included in either one of those plans. And so the process of developing the Resilient Action Committee, which the Resilient Action Committee is a group of around thirty individuals, all volunteers in the community, you'll see in your folder there, a list of our, our committee members, the subcommittees that they are on, and our Resilient Action Initiative management team. So the Resilient Action Initiative management team consists of Mark, Mark Dwyer, Ann Walton, Doug Flornoy, and Tom Brooks from MIU. So we have two members of the Sierra Club, a member of our city council, and a member of MIU's administrative teams. So this management team worked together to help fundraise for the position that I currently hold. It was originally held by another sustainability coordinator who did a wonderful year's worth of work coordinating to develop the Resilient Action Committee model. What does that look like? Building relationships, working in the community to encourage participation with this process. So after that, one year was up, that's when I came in, in November, and we started to do a really deep dive around the process of developing the plan. So you might ask, what is resilience? The typical definition of resilience is the capacity to withstand or to recover quickly from difficulties. Our definition is preparing for the unexpected while expecting to thrive and prosper. These are the goals of the Resilient Action Committee. We want to promote high-level community in, in input in creating the resilient action plan, reviewing and prioritizing objectives, recommendations from the existing community plans that are, that are consistent with priorities and establishments established by the RAC. I won't read all of that, you can read that. Responsibilities of the RAC, these are self-imposed responsibilities. But we want to make sure that the plan that we're developing is consistent with what is observed as needs in the community, and that are actually represented by community stakeholders. That we, we want to make sure that what we're doing is going to serve the community. So we have an opportunity to review these previous plans, review community plans from across the nation, set our objectives after we've identified all of our areas of focus. And so our first stage, excuse me, our first stage of development, which was the first quarter of this year, was stage one, building a strong foundation. And so we needed to define the issues. We needed to look at those plans, we needed to look into the community and see where were the issues still sitting? Where, where are the issues? And can we actually ground those issues with definitions here in the community? We needed to get the stats, we needed to get the facts, we needed to really understand, really well, make a concerted effort to really define those issues. So we are currently in that process, and we are moving into stage two, where we are working to identify objectives. What are we looking to do here? We don't want to just go out and start solving issues, creating projects, having ideas around what it is that we would like to see happen. We actually want to make sure we've got a well-defined problem, and then we want to know what does resilience look like for that particular issue. So each one of our subcommittees has gone through the process of identifying areas of focus that are their subthemes. Each one of these subthemes has an additional set of focuses inside of the sub-theme. For instance, here's Foodways. And so Foodways is working to build food security, working to support the growth of community food systems, and support small farm business viability for Jefferson County. That would be wonderful. And so we went through and made a connection with what we were seeing with the Fairfield Forever Plan. Is this something that actually has already been recognized as a desired objective for the community? And we have. Waste Management Subcommittee, solid waste, inorganic waste, non-recyclables and recyclables. We know we have an issue with, well, what is recyclable? What's, what is, what is considered landfillable? You know, what is actually trash? And what is not trash? And so we're going through the process of really defining that for ourselves. Prior to my joining this group, the Resilient Action Initiative Management Team went down to Normal, Illinois, where our recyclables are taken, have gone out to SimCo to take a deep dive there, to understand where does our waste go, and how is it being dealt with? They've visited colonies. They know, you know, for self-sort, what's happening there? Where are the gaps? What do we need to have implemented here to help reduce the, the landfilling of resources, really? If it's a, if it's a recyclable product, it actually has value to someone. It can be sold, and so therefore it can be returned into the, the circular economy, can be turned into another product. Same with organic waste. We have quite a bit of food waste that goes into our landfill. Currently, I think the EPA says that fifty-eight percent of the fugitive greenhouse gases released from a landfill are from organic waste materials. A good percentage of that is food waste. We have no way to deal with our food waste in the community here. We would like to, we have had in the past a large-scale composting facility, but it was not feasible to run at that scale. You have to have a permitted site, it's a little more complicated. So what are some solutions? How can we deal with food waste in the community? We can do home-scale composting, just like we can do home-scale gardening. That's something we want to educate around, but there are also opportunities to have smaller-scale composting facilities. We just recently helped the Collective Iowa, over in the Bredtopia Building, write a swap grant to do a small-scale food waste composting, small-scale composting pilot that we can review and monitor and learn from, to see if this might be a model that we could expand for Fairfield. We'll know in a couple of months whether or not we get that swap grant, but either way, that project's going forward, and we'll have that opportunity to learn from that. And if it does work well, we're looking to bring in a bokashi element, and we're looking to use a non-labor-intensive aerated static pile system. If that does go well, then that's a system that we can replicate here for the community, keeping within the current Iowa DNR rules for small-scale composting facilities. So that's something we'd like to see happen. For our Enterprise Solutions and Community Connections team, we're really aware that communication is difficult across generational gaps, across demographics. We've lost all of our radio stations, or we just have a fragment of what we used to have. We've lost all, almost all of our print media. How, how are those that do not enjoy digital screens going to know what's happening in the community? How can they get access to the resources that they desperately need? And how are they going to know how to engage in the community when it comes down to events and things of that sort? So that's one area of focus for the community, Enterprise Solutions and Community Connections. We also realize that we don't have much of an entrepreneurial support staff, network here in the community. We'd like to see more entrepreneurial support networks going forward in the community when it comes down to building resiliency, economic viability, for those that are wanting to start up and build their own businesses. Buildings and Energies Group, earlier in June, our subcommittee Buildings and Energy, a subset of that, were presenting here to council around ADUs. You'll also see, coming up in the near future, that we will have another group of individuals from the Buildings and Energy Group presenting to Building and Zoning about, planning and zoning, about elder housing. So those are issues that we have in the community. We have a degrading housing stock in our community. We have enough houses, but not all of those are quality, desirable homes. And we have individuals who work outside of our community, upwards of three thousand people that work outside of our community, that commute here. Would they rather live here? Are they finding the housing stock that they would like to have? Or would, would something a little different be ideal for them? So ADUs could be an option, that's just one solution that we're putting forward. But also, we have a elders, an elder community, twenty-six percent of our community are above the age of sixty-five. The average in Iowa is around eighteen or nineteen percent. We have a large senior population. And so we have a shortage of housing, comfortable, enjoyable, quality, desirable housing for elders. That's something we want to think about. Private land stewardship, here in Jefferson County, we have twenty-eight, is it twenty-eight thousand acres? And twenty-one thousand acres of those are in the, in the form of agricultural lands. We have a lot of private land out there that could potentially be put towards conservation. We have, in Fairfield, we're quite blessed with a lot of tree cover, we've got a lot of green spaces, we've got a lot of park land, but we could have a lot more. Iowa in general, being a state of over, I don't know, I think it's thirty-three million acres, and we have ninety-five percent of that in the business of agriculture. It's been augmented. And so preserving habitat, re-establishing habitat, and protecting the archives of natural habitat is really important, and everything else that is included with private land stewardship. Land use, we're looking at, we're looking at issues around just how do we collaborate with our neighbors? How do we collaborate with the county? How do we look forward into the future for land use decisions? What, what are the right decisions to be made? Those are not necessarily decisions we'll be making, but we'll do research and look into other communities, how are they doing it? What's been really successful for them? And, you know, why, you know, why would we not employ some of those really successful models, models of practices from other communities? We're also looking to do deep inventories in our community. We've already started that process, that's something that our Green Iowa AmeriCorps members have been helping us with since the beginning of the term. We are working on inventories around underdeveloped spaces, whether those are buildable lots or green spaces or unbuildable lots, whether they are underdeveloped or underutilized commercial buildings. COVID has made an impact on our community, I think across the nation, that's the same. We have a lot of empty buildings in our community. What are some alternatives for those buildings? Re-infill? What, what can we do with those buildings? What are, what are businesses looking for? You know, so we can do these inventories, and that can be accessible to grow Fairfield, that can be accessible to the Chamber of Commerce, to the city. These inventories are going to be helpful for you to be able to dive deeper into what's available. We want to simplify it. We want you to look potentially at, you know, if you wanted to look at underutilized buildings in Fairfield that are this square footage and this number of stories with this many units inside, if you wanted to do a quick search for that, we want to make that available for you. In doing that, we have been collecting that inventory information with one of our, our Green Iowa AmeriCorps members, Allison Stimson, has been developing a database to collect and inventory those inventories, so that they are able to be queried. There's special inventories. It's really hard, if you've ever searched on Beacon, to get really in-depth information about a particular building. But if you wanted to have some of that anecdotal, you know, walk-by kind of information, you know, it, does it have tree cover? Does it, you know, does it have office units, or is it more manufacturing? It could just be listed as commercial. So we're going to have those inventories available for you in a database that is able to be queried and easily used. So these are some of the benefits of the Green Iowa AmeriCorps program, that are the value of the partnership. So cost, cost-effective expertise in environmental energy effectiveness and resources, that's, you know, that's through the Green Iowa AmeriCorps program in general, but it's also the relationship with the University of Northern Iowa. We had an opportunity to work with a student group from the University of Northern Iowa earlier in this year, and they helped us create a, a report on housing, housing infill, a report on organic waste system alternatives, and on, they got us started on our greenhouse gas inventories with Clear, Clear Path. Icly, Clear Path, Clear Path is a software training, or it's a software platform where you can do forecasting, inventories, calculations, and projections. So it's a wonderful tool to get baseline information for the community that's stored on a digital platform that we can make really nice visuals out of, which is great. And we're in the process of doing that now. Ella Phillips, who is another one of our Green Iowa AmeriCorps members, and I have been working on collecting the data for the Clear Path, or for the greenhouse gas inventories. We've collected the data for the city's fleets, the SimCo landfill, and then we're also now doing the buildings that the city owns, the city's facilities. This information will help us in the future for grant writing. When we know the baseline information that we want to solve for, then we can do that. Also, with the Green Iowa AmeriCorps program, you are, not only are you getting the expertise of the members, but you get the expertise and the training from the staffs, the staff at Green Iowa AmeriCorps. You get the use of the software, you also get the use of Arc Pro, which is a GIS software. All of that is included, pardon me. All of that is included in the, in the yearly site, host site match funds. So with, with that host match, we get access to the U and I, the U and I student team, we get access to the Clear Path software, we get access to the Arc Pro software, we get two Green Iowa AmeriCorps members for eleven-month term, we get two, potentially four, summer members. So all of that is included in our host match amount. You also don't have to do any of that hiring. We don't have to hire, we just get to recruit, but we don't have to hire. And also, you don't have to do any of that overhead cost of having a W-2 employee. You don't have to do the payroll, you don't have to do the time sheets or the time checking, you don't have to do the benefits, and all of that, it's all included. And so it's a really wonderful deal. You get expertise, you get extra hands on deck. We honestly couldn't do this work without them. Currently, this is some of the work that the Green Iowa AmeriCorps members are helping us with. So IT and administration support, inventory development, specialized skills, we spoke about those, sustainable community engagement, there are workshops going on for zero waste, for repurposing of waste materials, and community connection, developing a deep community connection. They can do non-federal grant research, energy efficiency, energy efficiency support, database development, GIS mapping. Ella Phillips is a skilled GIS mapper, this is going to be really great for us, and data entry, greenhouse gas inventories, and so much more. This is an example of the database that Allison is working on currently, and you can see there that it's just kind of tooled up for the non-residential buildings and the non-residential lots. So you would be able to query this, just like you could Beacon, but you get a deeper dive specifically to the information that we're trying to share with you around value-added properties. So this is the cash match that we would need to host another round of Green Iowa AmeriCorps members for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five term. Again, that'll be two eleven-term members, and potentially two to three summer positions. So it's a ten thousand dollar match. All right. And then the Fairfield future, or the, the future plans and objectives for the, for the Resilient Action Committee? These are just only four. We have many more. Of course, we will complete our Resilient Action Plan, as you see in the, you know, the diagram here. This will, we should have the draft of the plan towards the end of quarter four. We should be working on the implementation plan during that same moment, quarter one of twenty-twenty-five. We'll finalize that implementation planning and really reach out into the community around, informing council, the county, the community around the implementation goals for the plan. Okay, thank you all. I appreciate the time. Do you have any questions?
So for the AmeriCorps members, those matching funds, that's the total, ten thousand dollars that you're requesting from the city?
Ten thousand dollars is the total that I'm requesting from the city.
And is the, are there any other stakeholders who are going to be funding that as well as it's just coming from the city?
We are asking the city to cover that match.
Okay. And they're not? Okay. And they're not, we wouldn't be telling the AmeriCorps members, I mean, they're not our employees. We're not involved in, okay. We're just funding them for the RAC.
Funding them for Resilient Action Committee activities, and then also Green Iowa, Green Iowa AmeriCorps-specific activities. So if, if you have activities around weatherization, around environmental protection, around community engagement that has something to do with waste management, things of that sort, they are available for that use as well. But yes, they are not our, our employees. They are members, and we can assign tasks.
We, meaning not the city, but the Resilient Action Committee.
I would ask that you tell me what you would like, and yes, you can assign tasks, and I will make sure that they get accomplished, as long as they fit within the parameters. Yeah.
And they already did the weather, weatherization and passing out of the energy efficiency kits, right?
Yep. We have.
This past year.
And if we do decide to continue the Green Iowa AmeriCorps program, there's an opportunity for an expanded, it's an auditing process. So the, the members would be trained. It's around a $2,500 training for auditing. Let me get the name of that for you. It's called Building Performance Institute Training. And that's something that they can be certified in, and it's a skill-building opportunity for them that they can take on after, as a credential, you know, to bring forward in their lives if they'd like to have that as a credential for themselves.
That training, that training is included?
That training is included, and then also the auditing materials, the auditing equipment, the blower door equipment. It's around $4,000 worth of auditing.
An energy audit of someone's home, for example?
Energy audit of someone's home, in order to make sure that it is comfortable, that it is conservative, and that it is cost-effective.
I appreciate the thoroughness of the report. Thank you. I would think, you're, you're asking the city for money?
I'm asking the city to match, to, they call it a match, because the, the great majority of the program is funded through federal grants. The Green Iowa AmeriCorps program is primarily funded through grants. But it's, it's about 8% of the total cost of the program that the city would cover.
I would think it'd make, my thought is, not, I appreciate the report, not knowing that there was going to be an ask. I would think would make sense to refer to a committee. I would like to have a recommendation from a committee after some further review.
In the past, it came through environmental and franchise utilities, but I.
So then, that would recommend, my, my suggestion is that we refer to the, the ENF committee for further review. I'd just like the recommendation, some, some, some deeper dive.
It's on the agenda as a first action item.
They're just not named the same, so there's.
They weren't put together.
I see.
She's doing a presentation here. The action item is under, is.
Yeah, I figured I would just go ahead and make the ask, because it wasn't printed on the agenda with a total.
Right. Just so they understand, the $10,000 that the city would put up, like you said, it's only a portion, but the GIA members have the benefit of health insurance, paid vacation, training.
They also get.
Child care help.
Credit towards loan forgiveness for their student loans.
And all of the ones that we have so far are residents of Fairfield.
Correct. Current, current residents. One will be leaving to go back.
To school, right.
Is council action this month soon enough?
I'm sorry?
Is council action this month soon enough?
I think so.
We've already interviewed a couple prospective, prospective people for next year.
We have. We've interviewed two, and we have one that is considering returning for the 11-month term, which would be wonderful, to be able to bring forward all of the information that they've already gleaned into the next term.
And their start date would be late September?
September, mid-September. September 18th is when they started last year. So they'll get a gap from August 16th to September.
It's 11-month appointment.
Did you get a second?
I haven't made a motion yet, but I will. I moved the, the request to refer to the Environmental and Franchise Committee for review and possibly, hopefully, a recommendation.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to refer this issue to the Environment and Franchise Committee. Motion by Gandy, second by Kanas. Any discussion?
Are we going to have to then refer the action item, or I guess we'll decide at that point?
Well, we're kind of proceeding that action item. We're tabled when we get there.
At that point, maybe. Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Motion carries unanimously. We should be, have an answer for you by the next meeting of the council, I hope. So you have it by end of July.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, we'll have a recommendation by the next meeting, and then the.
Yeah, and take action.
Then we'll address, yeah.
Right. Okay. Okay, next we have Trina Smalley. Talk about sidewalk and street safety.
I had to write this down, so I don't forget anything. Excuse me, I never had to come to a place like this before and do this before.
You'll be okay. Just breathe deep.
I grew up in a home where nobody listened to me, so I'm not used to people listening to me. It's very.
You'll be okay.
Emotional talking to people when you tried to all your life, and no one listened to you now. Although some people are listening to me. Anyway, so my name is Trina, and I have witnessed many pedestrian accidents on South Sixth Street. I could mention names if you wanted me to. But I would like a stop sign put on the corner of South Sixth and Washington, where I was hit by a truck on June 9th at 6:00 PM. That is a very busy corner. It is just a little ways west of the New Life Methodist Church, and when those people get out of church, that's an even busier corner, and that's the corner where I got hit by a truck. I fortunately didn't have any broken bones, because the truck driver stopped just in time to spare me from that, but he was speeding. And he said that the sun was, boy, in his eyes, and he could not see. Well, and I don't know, why would you be speeding that fast around the corner, entering the wrong side of the street, and plowing over a woman that was only three steps away from being on the next block of going home? But he did, so.
Can I ask you a quick question, ma'am?
Yes.
Was it, was this in the evening or in the morning?
6:00 PM.
So the truck was traveling westward?
Yeah, it was traveling westward. It was turning left. I was.
I'm just trying to determine which corner you want the stop sign on.
It was going north, and it was turning left onto Washington Street. A little too fast, and entered on the wrong side of the street. Why would you do that when you couldn't see? I don't know, but that was his excuse. So anyway, I, if, if there were a stop sign there that other pedestrians would be kept safe, they would have to come to a complete stop before they turn the corner. There, that's a busy street, South Sixth Street. We have students that come to in front from middle school and pence school, and they deserve a right to safe commute. There's also people that live, where I live, on the, you know, the Fairfield Park Two Apartments that frequently walk to Dollar Tree and back, that need a safe commute. And I just, my main concern, of course, is the students have a safe way to go back and forth. And then, let's see, I would like some stop signs to replace the yield signs on Monroe and Sixth Street. And not long ago, the late Kevin Franklin, who lived at 504 South Sixth Street, twice, got hit by a car. The first one was at nighttime, and apparently the driver didn't see him. He hit him, his name was Gary Davis. He lived on the property, and he worked for them. And then one January, he hit the vehicle he was in somewhere around Mount Pleasant, hit some ice, and he got killed in the traffic accident. So Gary Davis is not here. But just not long ago, before Kevin Franklin passed away, there was a white car being driven by a Mexican young lady who was speeding, who was approaching that yield sign too fast. And she hit Kevin Franklin, which he's not here to speak up for himself. But he came up to me, I was sitting on the park bench, and he came up to me, and he was limping. And he said, "My hip hurts, and my leg hurts, and I can't barely walk in this white car." This lady, and this Mexican lady in this white car was driving too fast, and she hit me. And he walked with a limp for at least two or three days. He suffered.
Is that also, I'm, I'm sorry, just trying to get clarification. Is that also Monroe and Sixth Street?
Yes, where those yield signs are. I think you should put stop signs there for.
Were the police called in both cases?
I don't know if he called the police or not.
Well, the reason I'm asking him is because there'll be a police report that the committee could look at it, if it did exist. All right.
Well, it happened shortly before he passed away on March 13th, so he isn't here to speak up for himself, but he suffered. And then that, down the street down here, you know, we, we have a lot of pedestrians with the first Saturday's art walk, and sometimes I hang around Optima, and I have to slip out and go to Dr. Hance, the chiropractor here next door. And on that corner, where you are on the north side, and you're trying to go south by America's Diamond, and these cars have the red light, and it says, "Walk." It doesn't last very long. It says, "Walk." And you're only, I'm only about halfway in the middle of the street, and all of a sudden, these cars want to turn left and go on Burlington Street, and they're already out there just waiting to go. And there's something out of sync and out of timing with those signals that if you put the little walk buttons on where the streetlights are, like they have on by the Iowa State Bank, and down on South Sixth Street, the walk buttons, there's normally time to get across the street. But for some reason there, when I'm headed towards America's Diamond, I can't get across the street in time. Of course, I have a bad knee anyway, but that. And, and, and the signals down there by the Midwest One, those signals, I have no trouble getting across the street, about none of these places. On June 16th, I was coming from eating at the Riverside Free Restaurant. I was at, facing this way. The light was red. There was this white car. If it, if it would have stayed stopped like it was supposed to, when I was at the crosswalk, I would have time to get across the street. But it did something it wasn't supposed to do, and it started speeding, and it went over on the wrong side of the street, and it turned left onto Burlington. I'm not on the police force, because if I was, I would have went after it, and I would have that white car. I would have given them a ticket. But anyway, and then, so we recently here, now we have a sidewalk that goes all the way on the east side, that goes clear down to South Casey's, which is a good change, because years ago, there was a woman walking down that street, and a vehicle ran over her and killed her. And I was glad to see a sidewalk. And we got many pedestrians, a lot of people, MIU draws people from all over the world. They don't all have cars. If there were these businesses that go clear out to Super 8, if they were asked to have a functional sidewalk in front of their places of business, not only would I feel that would draw more commerce into the community by MIU students and pedestrians, but it would also make me a safer route to walk, especially in the wintertime. It's not exactly safe walking out in the street. So if there were functional sidewalks that go out west, like past Super 8, because I used to work at Super 8, if I'm September 2008 to September 2009, and walking home in the wintertime where there is no sidewalk was challenging. And it'd, it'd be nice if they're going to take business that route, that they would have functional sidewalks that go that route. It would be safer for a lot more pedestrians in Fairfield. And that about sums up what I wanted to present to you. I just, what, what can we do at some of these stop signals? Can we put up any signs that says, "Watch for pedestrians," or something, or on that corner down here? Can we put a, the little button you push that gives you a walk signal that could make there be enough time for pedestrians to safely get across the street in the future?
Well, I'm not sure about that, because that's Highway 1 intersection, and the state of Iowa has most of the control over those.
No.
I was going to say the timing on that. Can you speak to the timing on that?
Yeah.
We've got somebody here that can speak to that just a minute.
The city engineer will address that question.
Trina, can you just step, just step this way, and then Melanie can come up beside you. You're good. You articulated yourself well. Thank you.
So on the lights on Burlington and Main, yes, lots of concern, or we've heard this concern before. So the traffic signals and the timing are at our jurisdiction. So we can put in requests at any time. The problem goes is when you increase that amount for the pedestrian to cross there, you back up the traffic on Burlington, because you're increasing the one, and you have a longer wait time. The different discussions with changing locations of crosswalks, putting them from the corners rather than the centers, or both, would be a real good solution to that. That wouldn't involve the timing. Now, granted, timing is the cheapest, and, but it has other impacts. We do have the traffic signals of Burlington and Main on the CIP. I'm not sure if it's two years out or three years out, because the actual signals themselves need to be replaced, masked arms and everything. So we would do a complete pedestrian upgrade with those when we did them. It pretty much, I don't want to say standard, but that was the plan to include, you know, push buttons and signage, and meeting all of the current ADA requirements for pedestrians.
When did you say that is coming up?
I don't know if it's in two years in the CIP or three years. Is it a couple of years, I want to say a couple of years out. There is a, a grant that we want to apply for that we wouldn't apply for until this August. So I know it's not in the fiscal year that we just started, but I'm not sure how far out exactly that is.
If I'm heading north on South Main, there is no left turn signal there, right? So if I'm heading north, when that light turns green, is the same time they're getting the walk signal?
Yes.
So there is no, there's no.
Right.
Disper, or, or time displacement between the walk signal and the green light.
Correct.
It's just the majority, or a lot of people do turn left at that signal, and then they have to yield to pedestrians.
Yes, and they don't.
So, but they have.
Yes, yes, yes. Which, we talked about this, sorry.
So, so it's not that the walk signal isn't long enough, it's just that there's impatient drivers wanting to turn left when they're heading north.
It is a little bit short there. So there are statistics that says, you know, you use an average walk speed of this, and then a crossing distance of this, and your timing should be this. We are on the low end of the required amount, so it's, it's a range. What?
I was going to ask you if that takes into account the demographics of the community, like the age demographics, for example?
So it certainly can, but again, with balancing between the Burlington traffic and the pedestrians, we made sure that the pedestrian timing is still within the recommended guidelines. But no, it wouldn't, therefore, it wouldn't take into account an older population.
Could we put a sign up on the turn signal that says you must yield to pedestrians? Because, I mean, you, you tend to sit on Main Street to turn onto Burlington longer than you do on Burlington to turn onto Main. So if we put a sign up that says, "Left-turning traffic must yield to pedestrians," that might help, like, peak some.
Yeah. The sign, and this is where it gets weird. Signage is actually dictated by the DOT, whereas the signals are still for ours, but I can talk with them on that.
Okay.
But they, they have said we can change the timing. I do know that the pedestrian cross. Um, I do know that the pedestrian crosswalks, um, on Burlington, the mid-block crossing, has been taken out twice this year, um, by drivers. Um, one actually threatened, um, owned up to it, um, prior to doing it, um, at the, in the street department, um, voicemail box. So. Um, don't know if they were for sure the one, but they definitely made some accusations there. So, um, it would, yeah, definitely an overhead, but I can talk to DOT on what might be some options on that.
I have also seen there at that crosswalk specifically, since there's a dance studio now on the south side, I've seen kids like try to cross and cars just blowing past. And this was something that we mentioned at our Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting, like just trying to get more awareness of pedestrian rights of way, you know, or, you know, what we can do and maybe we can brainstorm some ideas. I'm not sure what is possible and what isn't, but I do think that it's a big problem, especially along Burlington and Main Street. I had a friend who was pushing a stroller. She got hit by a car on Second and Burlington and people just maybe don't realize that pedestrians have the right of way.
Right. And there is, um, uh, you know, Sixth Street is especially hard for pedestrians trying to cross Sixth Street because it is wider than a lot of our other through streets. Um, and so, A, that increases the speed, um, the likelihood that people are speeding through there. Um, but it also means that there's a, um, wider area for them to cross. Um, I, one thing I wanted to say, just kind of for the public's information, for your information, the public's information, um, and we talked about this a lot with the Second and Broadway. So if the traffic in one direction is way too, is much more than the traffic in the other direction, a four-way stop is not useful. Because every time, so, um, we put up a stop, four-way stop at Sixth and Washington, most every time someone pulls up to that stop sign, there's not going to be a car on Washington. So then you end up getting slow and goes, or not stopping at all, which is more dangerous. So I think, you know, referring this to public safety to brainstorm some ideas that might not be a four-way stop, but I do know there's some sight distance issues at, uh, Fourth and Washington. I travel that way a lot. There's a sight distance issue at, um, for a car pulling out at Sixth and Washington. So there could be some other things that we can definitely look at, at those intersections that maybe isn't stop signs. Um, but some things that we can look at to, um, maybe some immediate fixes or solutions, um, while we wait for the long-term solution.
Yep. I certainly think that none of the cross streets on Sixth should have a yield sign at this point because it's such a well-traveled street. So if we do have yield signs that cross over Sixth, we need to replace those with stop signs. But I also agree with you that we need to refer this. I would make a motion to refer this to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion by Kanas and a second by ST to refer... Should I enumerate these intersections or, uh, Sixth, Sixth and Washington I have?
Whole discussion. Whole discussion.
The whole discussion, alright. To, uh, public safety.
So it's gonna go to committee, Trina? So we'll discuss it deeper and let you know, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And our last, uh, person for public forum would be Ed Malloy. He's gonna talk to us about FIDA.
Good evening, Council. Uh, you have a discussion coming up later on your agenda that involves some city lots. And I thought it'd be a good time to give you an update on some of the work that we're doing on city, on infill lots within the city and also an update on our development of the Libertyville Road. So, um, first I wanted to bring your attention to a committee that was formed at the beginning of the year by Depp, with, under the leadership of Deborah Williamson. Um, Deborah, as you well know, is your chairperson of the Beautification Commission and is deeply concerned about all parts of the city's beauty, but also has a background in rehabilitating homes. So, uh, Deborah put together a, a group that included many city officials. Mayor Connie Boyer has been part of this group. Uh, Doug Reiner, Weston also have been regular members of this meeting on a monthly basis. And after several months, um, we discussed formalizing the committee. So that was recently formalized under the Grow Fairfield, um, organization. So we do have a subcommittee. These are some of the members that are, uh, as part of the committee and, and others that have attended. Uh, we have bank, the intention is to have really a, a whole community cooperative effort. We have bankers and builders and realtors and investors. Uh, Area Fifteen Regional Planning has been to several of our meetings as well to be there for any of the housing support initiatives that they can bring to the table. Um, the committee is called the Fairfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project. Jason, if you could put that one up, great. Uh, and basically, it talks about the need within the community that was all spelled out in the 2023 housing study that was done. That one will come later. We'll get that Neighborhood Revitalization Word Document. Is it a...
This was even the Word Document.
Okay, alright, maybe that one is, is not on there. So anyway, let me just read you the vision of this, um, committee. "To attract and empower multiple homeowners or investors who can effectively revitalize our dying neighborhoods." Um, "We're looking at serving, uh, the interest in the community for smaller homes, for micro homes or tiny homes. Um, we're also looking to find affordable ways for people to build new within the community and also to address workforce housing." So, and, and, you know, and, and I really appreciated the presentation that Faith gave by the rack and the inventory that they're taking. We look forward to seeing that and seeing what the potential is. And I think we all know, there is quite a lot of property within the city that is available for housing. Uh, so, the committee is, is really kind of organizing itself right now around, um, putting together a, a strategy for certain available lots within the city, uh, attracting, uh, investors and developers for, uh, for these properties. And Grow Fairfield Board, we had a discussion at our last board meeting about, um, doing a, a home ourselves. And I think many of you are probably familiar with the Iowa Prison Industries Iowa Homes Project. There are a couple of home, a couple in Fairfield that have been developed under Habitat for Humanity, uh, uh, yeah, Habitat for Humanity. And, um, we're considering, um, doing a project on one of these lots and, um, showing what's possible for, for city infill development. And as I said, we're also talking with a number of builders and developers who may have some interest as well. Um, we're also learning that some of our largest employers are interested in this area of development along with workforce housing. So we're working to kind of coordinate all of that, you know, within our scope. So I know that the discussion on the lots that will be considered tonight will come in a few minutes. So we'll wait, uh, potentially to, uh, continue the discussion at this point, at that point. So the other thing I, I wanted to just give you an, an update on our Sunrise Trail subdivision. We can put up the parking lot, uh, picture there. The, um, we have, uh, basically consummated a, an agreement with the, uh, Cambridge Little Achievers to, uh, develop another parking lot for them on the south side of their building, where they would swap us a piece of land that is just to the west of their building, giving us, um, uh, egress and access to the thirty-acre piece of property where we would start the development. So the blue shaded area on the bottom there is a new parking lot, um, uh, to the south of the building. It'll be forty stalls. And then the area outlined in red and, um, and the existing lot that's, that leads into it is area, is an area that we will now own and control, uh, allowing us to kind of begin to plan and build inside the development. Next slide, please, Jason. Says, "As you recall, this is, um, a treatment that French Rennecor did for us late last year. And essentially, it shows the development in four phases. Um, the Libertyville Road is at the bottom here, so that's the, that's actually the north. So coming into the property and heading south, um, you go past the childcare center on the left and then into that blue shaded area, which is identified as Phase One. And then the area beyond that, the white area would be Phase Two, green area Phase Three and red Phase Four." Now, I think we're going to, you know, tho, these are not final site, site plans. This is just a rendering of what's possible out there. We think lot sizes are probably a little large. Uh, developers that we've spoken to are interested in more, in more density in order to come in, uh, to, uh, purchase lots within the subdivision. So, uh, we're now surveying, uh, the entire area for the topographical and boundary. And then once we have that done, uh, working with a development consultant, where we'll start to develop a little bit more of a, of a, uh, project plan. Um, and at that point, we would like to continue the discussion with the city about, um, an infrastructure partnership, uh, in the project overall. So, um, that's just a general update on, on where we are. Um, we think, you know, if, if we can, um, uh, move into some of those areas of planning in the next couple of months and, uh, talk about an infrastructure plan for next year, we can start in the spring and, um, be, be able to start selling lots and attracting developers into the early, into the middle of next year. Um, so that's just an, a quick overview of where we are right now. I know we'll, we'll discuss the lots that the city has available, uh, coming up on the agenda, but I'll just ask on these if there are any questions. Very good, so.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks.
Alright, now we'll move on to resolutions, action items and ordinances. Uh, the first action item on our agenda is consideration of support for the Green Iowa AmeriCorps twenty-four, twenty-five year.
Do we need a motion to table that or just, I'll make a motion to table it? I made a motion to table it.
Yeah, I heard your motion to table by Tuvil.
Second.
Yep.
Second by Gandy. Uh, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion to table the consideration of support for Green Iowa AmeriCorps, uh, to a particular date, next meeting, I guess. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Uh, action item, consideration of the Walton Club Bridge replacement. So the property committee met last week and looked at three plans that French Rennecor had drawn up.
Melanie, do you think that it's prudent to discuss the options now or just go ahead and refer it to ways and means for further discussion?
Which one? Are you talking about the bridge?
Yeah.
Oh, well, the committee had a recommendation on one of the options.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Do it now. I'll come in. Do you want me to go over them for you, Doug?
Yeah, if you like, um, that'd be great. Thank you, Melanie.
Okay.
Maybe, also just stating at the outset that we're contractually obligated, basically, to, to refurbish the bridge there.
Yes, our con, our lease agreement with them says that we are responsible for the maintenance of everything out there, pretty much. Um, so, um, option one is to replace the bridge with six forty-eight inch, um, high-density polyethylene pipes. Uh, these would be, um, put, I guess, at, at the bottom of the pond and then filled with dirt and rock and, um, sealed around them so that the water is only going through the pipes. Uh, the reason for this number of them is there is a fair amount of drainage that comes in, um, upstream of those. And in order to make sure that, uh, the pond north of it and the one even north of, um, Walton Road don't see a rise in water level, um, that many pipes is ne, and of that size is needed. We can't really go with a larger pipe, uh, because of clearances and coverage, um, and cost. I mean, forty-eight inch is expensive, but, um, it's much better than putting in a box culvert when it comes to cost. Um, one of the things discussed at the committee level is that this would have a long-term benefit to the city because it is, um, it's not gonna have a weight limit like a bridge would, um, that you can drive, whether it is, um, emergency vehicles or construction vehicles or whatever might need to cross that area can, um, access it much better than they could with a bridge. So, uh, whatever, no matter what happens, um, in the future, maybe no one plays golf in twenty years. I don't know. I don't golf, so, but, um, you know, that, that's still, we don't lose an invest, an investment in there.
I mean, the planned, that planned bridge would be substantially wider than the current structure? Like ten feet, I think you told me?
Uh, so, the top of the DM is, is about ten feet, um, wide. But, so there wouldn't be any side rails on this option one. So it could be a wider piece of equipment or wider, something wider could go down it. Um, option two is a bridge replacement, which would be a ten-foot wide bridge, seventy-five feet in length, um, basically going back there. Uh, so your cost is in the prefabricated bridge of around a hundred thousand dollars and then the concrete to rebuild the piers, um, which are the main thing that's failing of around a hundred thousand dollars as well. So that one is...
Jason, sorry, can you scroll to, I assume that that's on the next?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, yep. Um, and then the last item or the last option, option three, was adding, I'm gonna use air quotes here because I don't know how else to do it, a bike lane or a golf cart lane on, um, Walton Road. So it would be widening Walton Road, um, creating a separate lane that would allow the golf carts to travel that way rather than crossing over the bridge. Um, threw this one out there as maybe it's cheaper than doing something else because you're not working out in the middle of, um, the water. But actually, because of the size of the box culvert that is under Walton Road, adding any extensions to that really increased the cost. Um, and so the committee, um, Doug, I'll let you take over recommendations.
Just one quick, uh, question. The lifespan of these three options or the two options that are in for the bridges are similar?
Yes, well, so action, uh, one and three are, are, um, either it's a concrete box culvert or a high-density polyethylene pipe culverts. Um, so they're gonna last a minimum of fifty years, likely much longer. We don't even know the lifespan of, um, high-density polyethylene. More than likely, the, um, you're gonna have a silt problem and the pond needs to be dredged out before you have to worry about the pipe spanning. Um, it, and then, so the bridge replacement is going to, replacing with a bridge is going to have a similar lifespan to what was there, um, where you're looking at closer to, uh, like a maximum of fifty years. So, um, I mean, I, I use fifty in the capital improvements planning for bridges. Um, Crow Creek Bridge was, I think, fifty-five years old, something like that. So, um, that's what you're looking at for most of your bridges. Possibly less depending on, on the elements. Um, but, so options one and three are gonna give you a much longer lifespan.
And, and then the, uh, maintenance on the culvert bridge, the first option, is lower than the maintenance expected on the other bridge. Is that right?
Um, so, the maintenance, other than the fact that it's gonna have a shorter lifespan, um, option one and two are gonna have the same kind of annual maintenance. I mean, there's nothing really to do. Um, option three is gonna have the increased annual maintenance because of maintaining, um, the surfacing for that. Uh, they're likely gonna have to be followers or something separating the two traffic, two things of traffic and, um, those are gonna be replaced because we know that those...
So the committee, committee, I'm sorry, done?
Yeah.
So the committee voted to recommend option one, which is the, uh, HDPE, the High Density Polyethylene, uh, Pipe Culvert, uh, to be placed in there at the cost of roughly a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. That includes the contingency.
And this estimates, um, you know, this is not bids at this point. But that would be the next step, um, is to prepare final plans, uh, to bid. Uh, this project may fall under the bid threshold that we can do quotes rather than bids, um, giving some more opportunity to local contractors. However, we do have... However, we do have, you know, Iowa Bridge and Culvert working in town right now, so we wouldn't necessarily want to tie our hands on anything.
So, I'll make the motion that the council consider option one as a solution to the Walton Bridge problem.
I want to point out too, just if anybody's considering option three, that also creates a lot of cross-traffic on the golf course over, across holes that will be played to get from the road back to one T, which will be dangerous, so.
Yeah, and traffic down Walton Road.
Yeah.
And then, there are the additional potential implications for people driving their golf carts on a city road and then what that looks like for registering and, you know, insurance, et cetera, et cetera.
Being street legal and that kind of thing.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
All right, so the motion by Florinoy, second by Gandy to accept option one as a solution to the dam construction at Walton Club. Any discussion?
I feel as though maybe we're jumping the gun that Ways and Means needs to take a look at this and decide how we're gonna pay for it because it's not a budgeted item.
Well, we're not recommending how to pay for it, we're just recommending that that's a choice you would make. Whether they execute it this year or next year is a separate matter. We didn't, do you understand the distinction I'm making?
Yeah.
There's a contractual obligation to maintain the property, correct?
I mean, maybe we need to look at the contract, you know? I don't know what...
You stated there was.
I think we've done that part.
Right.
I read it, it looks pretty dramatic.
Not that that's not accurate, but just like going forward, you know, what are additional costs that we're gonna need to cover and if that's something, you know, we need to rethink.
But we're not committing...
So, this doesn't commit us to paying anything to...
No, this is just, the committee was asked to look at the three options. That's the option that we looked at all three of these and the committees decided the option one.
If there was no, if there was no council discussion or if this was a budgeted item, we, your motion would allow us to proceed with a budgeted item. It's not a budgeted item, so it needs to go to Ways and Means before we proceed. And so, we will not, we won't bring the council a design agreement with French Renneker until Ways and Means has had an opportunity to look at it since it's not a budgeted item.
Maybe the motion should be referred to Ways and Means.
Or proceeding with that first option, right? I mean, we still need to select the option.
All you're doing is recommending, you're just recommending.
Recommending the first option.
Yes, first option.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Sent to Ways and Means, yeah.
Yeah. For consideration. Back there, did you get that motion?
No.
No. I only got one so far.
Can I, or I guess, does the person that made the motion have to amend the motion?
I can withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Melanie, is there some part of this bridge funding that might be a state grant?
There are always options for that, but I'll be honest, I don't like messing with state and federal grants for under a quarter of a million. I hate to sound greedy, but...
It's not very big. I just think probably there's supposed to be billions of dollars infrastructure money and bridges fit.
Yeah.
So, are we gonna be safe in calling this a bridge if it's a bunch of tubes?
No, it would still be, I mean, it would be a causeway, it would be more of a dam, but I think dams are actually in the infrastructure bill as well because there's a lot of ones that need replaced, so, throughout the United States.
All right. What's the council's pleasure to do with this?
I would make a motion to take property committee's recommendation of option one and refer it to Ways and Means.
Okay, I'll second that. Moved by Kness, seconded by Florinoy. Discussion.
Did we or do we need to approve option one or is this just a...
Well, I think Ways and Means will have the final say on it. Property committee already said option one is okay. Ways and Means will decide how to pay for it and when.
So, we don't need to approve that at any point. Okay, all right, just checking, so.
Okay, for the discussion.
Nope.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. I thought it was more complicated than I thought it would be. All right, next item is consideration of, to list city properties with FIDA as Ed described.
Do we have more detail?
Well, okay, that's a question.
There's no link to it, so.
Are we gonna existing properties and ones that we'll acquire in the future or just the existing listed properties that, like, for example, not including Sixth Street, which we acquired recently?
Are we talking 657A properties?
Well, that's the question.
The properties that we...
Does FIDA have an opinion? Does FIDA have an opinion?
Ed, do you have an opinion on this?
So, I guess my disconnect is there was no link to this, so we have no idea what this is even talking about.
So, do you mean, so, with existing properties that basically the city has no...
This was brought to my attention by Melanie and there are a couple, it's specific that she has in mind.
Yeah, and you guys discussed this at the end of your property meeting, but it wasn't an action item, so you moved it to council rather than. So, there's three main properties, I guess maybe that are on our hot sheet or I don't know what you wanna say, they're, they've got a target on their back. No, there are properties that can be easily divested because there's no utilities on them. They, we've had them for a while, we've had discussions about them. So, that would include the parking lot at Fourth and Low, well, actually, Fourth and the railroad tracks. Another person owns the one actually along Low. The second parcel is the Sixth Street property, once we have a matrix on how exactly we want to list any stipulations with that. And then, the last one would be the three lots and an alley that are behind Logan Apartments. When we sold Logan Apartments, we kept the outlots that were associated with that, and so we have sat on that for a while. We did have a developer come last year, maybe two years ago, but didn't receive the tax credits and then is not interested in the property anymore. In the meeting with, when I sat down with Ed, you know, that this, any of them could be, or the Sixth Street and Logan could be good opportunities for developers and I think maybe some local businesses maybe. The idea would be rather than having a realtor list them, is having them on their website and, I guess, using them as a point of contact.
I think the two, two discussion points that we had were around promoting them, for one, particularly with the organized structure that we have right now that's gonna be focusing on the culverts. And then, the second one is if we wanted to stipulate that if there was some incentive price for the lot, that a builder or potential developer would agree to develop a home within a certain period of time. Those are things that we could develop. This is not a discussion I've had with my board at this point. Would love to bring that back to them and then also a discussion within the committee to see how we would go about making these available, but we would, we would be happy to play a role with that. Don't have any fixed ideas about the relationship between the city and the organization right now. Be happy to meet with Ways and Means or whomever for next steps.
I think too, the impetus was the idea that we wanna make sure that the city properties that we're divesting ourselves of are going towards addressing the housing needs as opposed to just listing them with a realtor and then the highest bidder gets it and then we can't dictate how that's used. Maybe it's like a garage, you know, so if that's something that FIDA could work with the city on developing.
I do, I think we can, and I think if you're gonna ask someone to do that, there's likely gonna be some incentive involved.
Yes.
And if someone is going to, you know, step up for the incentive price or whatever it is, then they are going to pledge to meet certain standards, certain timelines, and we can help develop those.
I know the lot on Fourth and, and the railroad one there. We briefly discussed, but there's, there's a for sale sign now by a realtor.
On the other one.
There are two lots.
Two lots there.
Okay, so the one on Fourth is not, we don't, we don't butt up to Fourth?
No, we don't butt up to Low. Maybe the for sale sign is...
It's on the corner of Fourth.
Is the for sale sign the depot? Is that what you're thinking of?
No, it's across the street on the corner of Fourth in the lot.
Okay. It might be on our lot, but that was not by the city doing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, I was just curious, so.
Might be just where the grout was loosened up in order to get the sign in, I'm not sure.
Don't let him sell the wrong lot.
You said it's landlocked, there's no egress to it?
The lot was owned, it's not landlocked.
It's difficult to, for like a semi to get in and out because of the islands related to the quiet zone. But in talking with Weston, we do have, I don't wanna say a lot, we have some issues with small business owners operating out of their home and once they've gotten too big for their home, kind of that in-between size, maybe an outdoor storage lot for a contractor. With this being the mixed use, it does, would open it up to a wide variety, but even though it's a smaller lot with not a lot of access, there is, there are some people in the community that have a need for, I hate to, you know, storage, but it's better than, I guess, us using it for storage.
So, my gut reaction is to refer this to property committee to work out details as to which properties and any stipulations we might have and sale prices and that kind of thing, and then bring it back to council for approval. That's my motion.
A little more discussion?
I'm okay.
Florinoy, you second first.
I was gonna say.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Florinoy, second by Roe.
If we're only talking these three properties, I'm okay with referring them to FIDA. Personally, I'm okay with referring them to FIDA now with future discussion on other properties. I don't see an issue with making, especially the two on the south side residential with projects and we'd have somewhat, I'm not gonna say control, but somewhat direction on how that could happen that way. And then, the one on the north side is, is open to, you know, to whatever it could be, but, but if we're only talking these three properties right now, I'm okay with, with going through with this or recommending to go through with this now.
So, you mean the Sixth Street property, 504 South Sixth?
The one behind Logan, the one on Sixth.
The one by Logan?
Yep.
And the one on Fourth Street by the railroad track?
Yes, the one across the depot.
And last year, FIDA brought us the one behind Logan with what I would call a mini development agreement. The developer just couldn't go through with it.
Right.
But they had everything in place.
Yep.
And they'd be ideal again if we had somebody like that again. So, that'd be a good, a good use of what FIDA's already gotten, that's documentation for that kind of a deal.
Even if we wanna jump on letting FIDA list these properties, it still wouldn't hurt to have the property committee go over the details of what the city would like out of them and formalize that set of standards that we're gonna send to FIDA, so.
So, what I'm passing around is just a brief flyer that I made that like a realtor would hand out, Terry can probably correct it for me, but it's just as the city is looking for a partner for developing three lots in a multifamily area or something like that. So, the ad does not, is not very specific, so to Matthew's point that, you know, we could go ahead and start listing these as something generic like that, that, you know, we're looking for a partner in developing this area and then the property committee can continue to fine tune those, but that can allow us to get some information out there now.
Okay, any further discussion?
Also seems like, from what you said, Ed, that FIDA would have to consider it too, like you could take it to your board and you guys could discuss it, so it seems, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, there are multiple levels of discussion, I guess. I don't know if we just, you know, hand it over to FIDA and then they, you know, come up with some idea or think about it and then refer it back to property committee and then we could come up with stipulations.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of accepting Ninth Street Water Main Project as final.
I'll do my best to make, give you guys an easy thing to vote on. No discussion.
We'll make it complicated.
I'm here to close out the Water Main Project on Ninth and Jefferson Streets. This is a project that's been kind of happening quietly over the last few months here. It's on Ninth Street from Washington to Jefferson and Jefferson from Ninth to Seventh, I believe is the cross street there. Morris Enterprises completed the work the end of June. We've attached the final quantities pay estimate, which is pay estimate number three, and the retainage pay estimate to our letter. If you vote to approve this tonight, that will start the two-year warranty period for the project. I don't know if you have any other questions. Otherwise, you can vote.
All right, we have a motion, we don't have a motion yet, so we're waiting.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Kness, second by Gandy to consider or to accept Ninth Street Water Main Project as final. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, ordinance 1248, so I have to open a public hearing, right? So, we're opening a public hearing to consider amending municipal code 1404.170 water meters hyphen required. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment on that? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and take a motion.
A motion to approve third and final reading.
Okay, motion by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Pam. Motion is to consider, no, I'm sorry, yeah, to amend municipal code 1404.170 water meters required as the final reading. Any discussion?
I did have a question for Steve about privacy concerns, I think, and I asked you about this a little while ago.
I couldn't get back a hold of you.
Oh, you could.
A couple of times and your mailbox was full.
Oh, I didn't see any calls coming anyway.
So, yeah, on, the question you was wanting, pause again, pause that.
Oh, yeah, so broadly speaking, I guess right now from these homes, we're collecting one piece of data a month, right? Just the total water usage. This will allow us to collect quite a lot more data. It's almost, I mean, what is it, minute-by-minute usage that gets sent to city once a day?
It records every minute of usage. They could extend that out to five minutes if you wanted it.
Right.
But that's it.
Yeah, my, my question was basically, would it be possible to, even for someone to opt into the idea of automating the data we're collecting right now, which is once a month getting sent the total amount of water they use, but not necessarily giving the city the minute-by-minute or even five-minute by five-minute usage if they felt that was, I mean, it's a, it's quite a lot of data collection and...
It's water usage, that's it?
Oh, I know, I know, but I mean...
It would defeat the whole purpose of this whole program.
Well, there are a lot of, there are a lot of purposes, and one of the main purposes, as far as I know, is we don't have to send someone to everyone's house once a month. And so, that would still, that would still be advantage.
The other part is catching water.
Catching water leaks.
Leaks and what have you.
Yeah, and water leaks are, of course, no good when they happen and we do wanna catch them when possible, but also, I mean, data can be used for all sorts of things you wouldn't expect. For example, texts go through the airwaves and they can be intercepted. It would be possible for a nefarious actor, let's say, to look at the text coming in from a house and see every morning, this person uses, what, two or three gallons of water at eight o'clock? Oh, they're doing their bathroom routine and then they don't for a week and then it becomes clear that person was on vacation, right? I mean, it is possible to extrapolate from a lot of data you can collect about a person's house because, you know, a person, when they live in a house, they produce all sorts of data. And I'm wondering if it would be possible, even though it is less convenient for the city because we won't be catching leaks, if it would be possible for someone to opt out if they felt that would be an overreach into their privacy.
I would rather not myself. I would rather not, myself.
I appreciate that.
If we're gonna do it, I'd just do it as a whole.
Right.
All together.
Yeah.
Including myself.
Sure.
So, that's my stance on that.
But, uh.
I do have, uh, some guys here that know a little bit more about this than I do.
We, we did discuss too, that, that if we wanted to put up an, an option out there that somebody did not want this or did want their meters read, that they would have, that possibly we could, we could allow it to have their meters read, but they would have to pay to have somebody come out and read their meters, they would have to pay for their meter. Um, it would be a rather large charge. But if that option, if somebody felt that they definitely needed something like that, if they wanted to be off this system, they would have to pay all expenses.
That was, that was proposed when we put in the current meters, back in two thousand and twelve, I guess. But no charge was ever imposed on the people who still have analog meters.
Right. Well, but we still read the other ones. This, these, we wouldn't be sending readers out anymore, so somebody would, we'd have to hire somebody to go out.
Right.
And, and do that.
I was gonna ask Steve though, I thought you said the most you can extend the gap between test or taking a signal from the meter is five minutes.
Yeah, when I called and asked about them after you asked that question.
So you couldn't, you couldn't use that meter to take a signal just once a month to get a reading on the total water usage?
Is Tony not available?
Yes, uh, I'm here. I don't know if I can be heard or not.
Did you hear that question, Tony?
I did hear the question. Thank you, board members, for allowing us to come. My name's Tony Deitch with Metron Meters. I'm here with my colleague Brett Butel and I'll let him, uh, field that question. I know we do have end-to-end encryption, uh, as a security for our data and it's fully customizable, our system, uh, to bring the data in at any increment of time. And we can also remove names and addresses, so, uh, to prevent any nefarious activity. Uh, we go through this, uh, throughout the country and, um, I'd like my colleague Brett to take this question. I think he has a, a pretty good, uh, eye on this. Brett, are you there?
Yep, good evening, everyone. Um, can I be heard?
Yes.
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 Very good, thank you. As, uh, as Tony said, um, there's a number of things we can do to protect, uh, everyone's privacy. You're not the only one to have, uh, this concern. One of the things we can do in our Waterscope platform is, um, not include any, um, uh, name, address, uh, account ID number, anything like that. What we need is simply our, uh, register number. And that can be integrated into your billing software, so there would be no data, you know, whatsoever that would be linked to any specific customer, uh, at all. As Tony mentioned, um, uh, you know, you know, cybersecurity is also, you know, a big issue. In order to get, uh, you know, we have hundreds and hundreds and thousands of these out across the country. Um, we actually pay people, um, on a monthly basis to try to break into our system. You know, and that's what allows us to have, you know, good cybersecurity. So we've never had any issues with this, uh, over the last, uh, I guess it's been fifteen or sixteen years. So, and then the other thing that you guys mentioned, which is, um, um, you know, possible, and some folks do it, is they do have an opt-out program. So what that means is you just have a regular register on the meter, but then you do charge a little upgrade, or a little, not upgrade, but a little extra fee to go out and manually read that meter. But as Steve said, the one thing that you guys, you know, that the data provides is fantastic proactive, uh, management of your water system. It doesn't take long for a very small leak to add up for your, uh, consumer base. Um, and then they'll, you know, all of a sudden start getting, you know, large water bills and then I don't know how you handle them internally, but it can be, um, you know, very expensive and most of the time you end up forgiving that bill anyhow. So I'm not sure if that answered your question satisfactorily.
Yeah, that was, that was great, I mean, especially the fact that, um, as far as, I think you said at the beginning, that it can be, it can be modified to, uh, to send on any increment we want. Would it be possible to, and I assume, I assume it would be possible to set it up so that most people are, say, on the standard plan of having the minute by minute data sent once a day, but then some accounts could possibly be put in a second bucket if they opted to do so? Or it's just, you know, much rarer, once a month, for example?
Yes, uh, that's how it's set up. It's, it's actually, we allow, uh, the system to be customized fully by the utility. So as Brett said, we have hundreds of thousands of these, uh, deployed throughout the country. And so you set it up the way you see fit for your customer base.
That was my question.
I just wanted to very briefly share a, an anecdote, um, about the importance and relevance of this. That, um, a couple of summers ago, I was living in Fairfield in a, let's say, fairly chaotic household and, um, a kid left the hose on and our monthly water bill was, it was eight or nine hundred dollars. And, um, yeah, so I think that having this and having, you know, a lot of people are not very good at taking the time to read things and opt-in and all of that. So having as a default that the city finds out about problems like that early rather than later and can notify the owners is, to me, a very, very good thing, from firsthand experience.
Thank you. Okay, any questions from the council? Alright, so we'll take a vote. All in favor, no, we need to do a rule.
I have first and second.
So the first is, uh, motion by.
Two Hill.
Two Hill and second by.
Ham.
Judy Ham. So, um, uh, motion on the floor is consider amending municipal code fourteen point zero four point one seven zero water meters required for final reading. You take a rule?
Yep, Two Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Alright, ordinance twelve forty-nine. What did he say?
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks to our guest online.
Oh, to them. Alright, thanks, Steve. Alright, motion twelve forty-nine to open a public hearing to, on ordinance twelve forty-nine, consideration of amending, amendment providing for adoption of parking violations. Is anyone from the public who'd like to speak to that ordinance? Not seeing anybody, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that we amend, um, ordinance number twelve forty-nine.
Okay, we have a motion by Esti.
Second.
Second by Two Hill. The motion is to consider the amendment of providing for adoption of parking violations. This is the final reading. Call the rule, please.
Esti?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, motion carries unanimously. Alright, uh, the mayor could not be here today, but she left me some notes, or done some notes. The EMA report on, uh, so they're creating a report on hazardous, hazard mitigation, um, plan, they're writing currently, and we have a survey that has to be completed, um, by residents. You can find it on the Facebook page Fairfield Civic Matters. I posted it there last Friday. Is it on the EMA site or do you know if it's on there?
I do not know that.
Melanie, where else can they access this, uh, plan survey with the hazardous mitigation, besides Facebook?
I, I don't wanna yell.
And before she comes and yells, I made a point to send it to all of my contacts in my emails, you know, to get people to try and take it, so I would encourage everybody to do that here.
Um, so there are paper copies here at City Hall and I don't know about all of you, but I received a copy in the mail, um, this.
No, I didn't.
From Jefferson County. So maybe that's what, um, you know, the rural areas maybe decided to do. I'm not exactly sure.
Alright.
It's also on our city website, on the homepage, on the left-hand side, hazard mitigation plan survey, talks about it and then there's a link to the form.
Paper copy is much easier, but, um, that would require, you know, I mean, if you don't have access to that, the computer might be more convenient, but it's, um, make, setting it up on Google Forms does not make it as easy as a paper copy.
I thought it was pretty easy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thought it was simple.
Is there a deadline when it's supposed to be completed, Bonnie?
I believe the report that they gave to council was mid-July.
And how many more responses do we need? Do we know that? How many more responses do we need?
I don't have that number.
They didn't set a goal for the number of responses, um, and, but obviously the more, uh, responses, the better. Um, and I know Doug and I talked about this in our, um.
Community conversation.
Community conversation, I was gonna say YouTube video, but, thank you. Um, is that, this is for Jefferson County as a whole, not just the city of Fairfield. So anyone who, um, happens to watch the studio, make sure that your friends and neighbors that live in the rural areas as well as in Lockridge or Batavia or wherever, um, that they fill it out as well, because it is important to the entire county. And maybe what impacts Fairfield, because we, uh, particularly we have different electric providers and different water providers, um, you know, all those things can change depending on the community and depending on the disaster, so.
Well, there's two other surveys that we want people to fill out as well. That's the water line composition or makeup survey, whether you have.
Lead line.
So lead service line.
Lead service line, that's what it's called.
Yep.
Whether you have brass or PVC or copper.
Yep.
Piping. And the other one is Fairfield Cares, is if you've had, uh, any experience in the last five years with, uh, in-home healthcare or lead one or either giving or receiving, uh, only, then we'd like you to fill out that survey. So Fairfield Cares can use that data to write grants. Alright, and then, uh, Doug, you wanna address this Main Street?
Yes, we.
Application?
Right, so the Main Street application presentations will be in Des Moines, Iowa, I believe, at two thirty on Thursday, the eleventh. So we'll be heading up there to make those presentations and we'll just see how that goes from there.
Alright. Uh, city attorney?
Yes, um, I got a couple emails from the mayor and one of them was about something we've looked at about every five years for the last twenty-five. Iowa Supreme Court came down in mid-June with something called the, uh, Split Gerber versus Banker Trust case. And a little bit of back history, we've had three or four lawsuits in this town under the statute that has to do with ice and snow on sidewalks. Usual rule on that is the private homeowner, if it's in front of a residential site, is going to be probably pled in as the main defendant. The city almost invariably gets named too. And then the way the city can handle it under the way the statute is and the way the state of the law is, we can impede to have the property owner and their homeowner's insurance indemnify us because it's the homeowner's responsibility or the property owner's responsibility to clear the ice and snow. There used to be a broader statute about that. About twenty-five years ago, it went to mostly ice and snow. Now the Split Gerber decision basically says cities can't have ordinances that put the liability on the private adjacent owner. Sidewalks belong to cities and they're our responsibility. They didn't address though the same situation as far as what happens with snow and ice and the way you impede somebody in under what is called common law liability versus statutory liability. So they're basically saying whatever used to be the case as far as statutory liability is no longer the law in Iowa that the, uh, property owner privately versus the city. The property owner's gonna win out each time as far as who's liable and it's gonna be the city. Except, the city can still turn around and if property owners had a jagged sidewalk out front for the last three or four years, didn't do anything under our ordinance that would have been, uh, public safety oriented, consistent with the rest of our ordinance, which is still permissible under the state, state code. After we saw what was coming down the pike as far as after snow and ice was left, but the rest of the liability was in question, ten, twelve years ago, we adopted standards for sidewalks and we went through five quadrants in this town. We had engineers go out and raid our sidewalks as far as fixing them. And we fixed every quadrant, didn't we, Melanie?
Every quadrant was assessed.
And I know we've raised that in some liability cases since then, that our city's proactive, that we keep track of our sidewalks, that we have standards for the way that they are maintained and we still are, we believe, we're entitled to do the common law indemnification pleading right now. But for the present time, the mayor wanted you to be aware that this case just came down. Supreme Court basically, it says it shifts liability for accidents caused by defective sidewalks from the abutting landowners to the municipalities, no matter what. Uh, and we can't shift liability anymore by carefully worded ordinances. However, then in the next discussion, they get into the same thing I'm mentioning from our history and that is that the Supreme Court really didn't address, uh, the problem about, uh, common law indemnification. And what happened if your property owner is not very careful, not very diligent, not very responsive when they get a notice from the city that you've got a sidewalk out front that's gonna hurt somebody. So we're still in a situation where I think the Supreme Court has left the door open for us to say that, uh, people who have been negligently, uh, ignoring a messy sidewalk, a sidewalk covered with sand, a sidewalk covered with mud, a sidewalk that's cracked or spalled, those are still things that we define in our ordinance very carefully. And I don't know, maybe it's time for us to do another, uh, city ward by ward sidewalk inspection. I know Melanie's loving me for that. Uh, but as far as the idea of us being diligent about our maintenance, it is something that every decade probably we at least be able to point at what we do to be careful about our sidewalks from the municipality view. Then we've got affirmative defense and a way to point at the homeowner's insurance again on the private side. But the Supreme Court isn't doing any town any favor as far as the way the statute's worded and that's as far as a lot of these things get considered. If it has to go to court to determine what the common law position is on it, I know what the insurance company for the homeowner's gonna do every time. They're gonna say, well, we'll see what the court thinks. But I still think we've got an open door for part of the city's defense, but that case is not good news. So, uh, it's called Split Gerber, it's June fourteenth and it's Iowa Supreme Court. I got a letter from city administrator after our, uh, one of our committee meetings and a discussion at the last council meeting about, um, what I would call a corner intersection interference visibility problem. I haven't written the letter yet, Doug, but we've got a situation that is pretty, it's probably as good an example of a corner intersection, what I call triangle visibility violation. As we've had, uh, come before us in years, we had, uh, a gentleman here at a council meeting or two ago saying that you just can't see around the tree and the fence that's built there. And it's been something that has evolved with a bigger fence and a bigger tree. So, uh, that letter will go out informing them, basically, they can't have that tree on the city right of way because of the visibility issue, uh, and they're gonna have to take the fence back too, at least to their own boundary line. We also had a public safety committee meeting, uh, since the last, uh, council meeting. Sergeant Joel Smith came and talked with us, uh, chief was there and we, we were talking about the possibility of a virtual neighborhood watch program that would ma- make things accessible for people that have security devices and security data at their locations. We had, uh, I think, a pretty positive showing from the people at the committee that that sounded like a way to help law enforcement. Uh, we were given the names of contact people down in, uh, Burlington. I don't know if Joel had reached out, uh, or if you have, Dave, but I've been gone for about ten days, so we'll get after that this month.
Joel reached out already.
Okay, alright, so I should talk to Joel. Okay, all right, so I should talk to Joel. All right. But that's gonna come back to you, and we'll have more, more to tell you about, probably an ordinance draft at some point, if you still like it, okay? And then, let's see, um, I think probably, I, I have two or three other things that have to do with our, um, houses that are in the process of six fifty-seven A, but basically, I made a few phone calls while I was back in Ohio. Uh, I'm still getting a runaround on the house at seven oh one about, uh, whether they were relinquishing interest over to the city about a mortgage that they're ignoring their responsibilities as a mortgage holder on. Uh, but I am in, at least in phone contact now with some people at USA Bank instead of the property manager. So I'll, I'll have more to report next time. I've been not successful with our, uh, Michael Goodman property up on North B Street. We're supposed to be having a trial setting conference with him. I've sent him emails, I've sent him mail, and I've tried calling his number a number of times. And, uh, we aren't getting any response from him, except he filed a motion to extend the time to have the trial setting conference. And all that does is buys him another twenty days probably from our court administrator, so we're still, we're kind of in the early stages, stuck in the mud. But, uh, other than that, uh, some of the other things that Wes and I are working on, I'll have more to tell you about next time, okay?
Okay, thank you. Committee and board reports, public safety and transportation?
Pretty much you heard, um, from, yes, from John.
Right. And property committee, we already discussed property committee's recommendations, so done with that. Doug, you have, um, city administrators' report?
Just quickly, we'll go over, I wanted to mention that, again, with, uh, lead line surveys, that Tyrell Curtis, for those that are not filling out those surveys online, is going door to door, and he moves extremely fast. He told me that he's doing about thirty houses an hour.
Wow.
He's in and out of your house in five minutes. All he wants to do is look at your water meter, and he leaves. And I, he does get occasionally, will have some pushback, understandably, that some person you don't know shows up to your house and wants to look at your water meter, and they say no. So we're trying to help through that. I've actually had, told him to have him contact me if that's a problem, but we have to get this survey done. We have no choice, and he's a really hard worker. We have had some complaints about site triangle issues on Highway One. Now that it's completed, we do have a lot of traffic, and now there is a parking and moving traffic interface along some of those intersections. So we're gonna go through and evaluate those and take that, uh, to public safety because we're getting a lot of complaints and near misses and what have you. The street department is shooting for next week to be completed with Park Street with, uh, but hopefully, the last pour will be this week. They don't know with the rain. They're working really hard and really fast. I wanna say thank you to the IT committee, especially, uh, Council Monroe, for going around to the department set and talking about some of our IT needs and helping us understand what the dynamic is as we move on into the future with some of the stuff that has been presented this evening.
Happy to help.
And then, lastly, the compost site, we still are having commercial contractors dumping in that site. They understand that we're leaving it open, you know, on Wednesdays and Saturday and Sundays, so now they're waiting, and now they're dumping. And the street superintendent is putting pen to paper, and we're going to present some options. He said hopefully by next council meeting to try to address some of these issues that we're having, but also maybe creating some revenue streams.
I actually met Joe out there this morning on my way to work, because I drive by it every day, and there were probably six or eight sixteen-foot trailer loads dumped of huge trees out there.
Right.
Um, over the weekend, mm-hmm. Um, and then I, on my way to lunch, I saw someone drove around the gate and was in it as well, so. Um, yeah, it's not, it's, it's not just contractors breaking the rules. There are people just driving around the locked gates, but, I stopped and talked to Rebecca today. We're kind of, like, looking at avenues to see if there's things that we can do also to help, so.
That's a big problem.
It is, yeah.
Curious whether the street department has any deer stand motion sensor cameras?
Not yet, I don't think, because Joe doesn't have any, he doesn't have anything to enforce. We need to create and enforce an ordinance, I think.
Enforcement mechanism.
Yeah, so we have to develop that first, yeah. And then, then he's like, I'll put up cameras, and then we can enforce the ordinance, so, yeah.
That needs to happen.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Wanted that to prompt you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.